Good evening. There being a quorum present, this special session of the House City Council is hereby called to an order on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025 at 6:00 PM, under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Texas. Please remove your hats and silent your cell phones, and let's stand for the prayer and the pledges. Councilwoman Sarah Meyers, in the latest prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the privilege of being here today, and the blessing of living in this city, especially during this exciting time. I pray that you give us wisdom as we make decisions, and that you make us humble, so that we can see other opinions, even if, and especially if, they're different than ours. Thank you very much for this opportunity, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now it's Sarah. Pledges, American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
The Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please proceed. Do we have any citizen comment forms? You can go ahead and bring it to me, if you will, please. Thank you, sir. Don't go too far. Mr. Patrick, if you will, go ahead and take a, go ahead behind the microphone.
Okay. I think you said I have up to two minutes. I'll try to make it a lot, lot shorter than that. I've lived here in Howe for about two and a half years, and my family and I absolutely love it here. And probably the biggest thing that I would say could use improvement, and I'm sure I'm not breaking any news here, is that the roads, I think, could use some more attention. And I won't, I know that some of the city council members that ran recently have made comments about that, and people are aware of it. But I just wanted to put my voice to that, that even though I'm usually for limited government and keeping taxes low, that's something that if there was to maybe be a bond election or a way that we could try to speed up getting some of the potholes that are so bad fixed, it's something that I am in support of, and I'm sure many other people would be too. And again, I say that humbly without having all the answers to it, and I'm sure other people are aware of it and are working on it. But to me, as much as I love living here, that would be the number one thing I would say, I'd like to see the city government focus on to try to improve as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizen comment forms? Thank you. And I kind of jumped ahead there, but I'll go ahead and read it. The City Council invites citizens to speak to the council on topics not already scheduled for public hearing or on the agenda. Citizens may address the council for a maximum of two minutes. The council is unable to respond to or discuss any issues that are brought up during this section that are not held, not being on, not on the agenda, other than to make statement of specific factual information in response to a citizen's inquiry, or to recite existing policy in response to the inquiry. We've had a couple other people enter the building since then. Any other citizen comments? Okay. We're going to move on to our mayor comments. Howe Hump Day Networking Breakfast will be held on Wednesday, March 5th, which is tomorrow, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. It's here in Summit Gardens. We also want to please join me in welcoming our newest member to the Howe Police Department, Officer Sam Wallingford. I think he's in the house somewhere. Also, I'd like to recognize Officer Marshall Bings for his outstanding service to our community. Chief Sullivan reported to me that on January 21st, 2025, Officer Bings conducted a stop where his quick thinking and response time were, where critical, critical think, excuse me, were crucial, involving a medical matter for an individual. We are fortunate to have officers such as Officer Bings who care about our citizens and those who visit our community. And I'd like to ask him to come up, and so we can get, present him a certificate. And the council wants to get a picture as well. Moving on to our consent items. These items consist of non-controversial or housekeeping items required by law. Items may be considered individual by any council member, making such requests prior to a motion and vote on the consent items. One, discuss, consider, and act upon consent items which are marked by an asterisk. These items are minutes of the regular council meeting, January 21, 2024, bills being paid for the month, detailed check rest to report, statement of revenue and expenditures, independent financials, secured deposits, January 31, 2025, recap and standings, January 2025, GTUA consumption report, add the law on tax assessment and collection contract between Grayson County and the City of Howe. Does the council wish to discuss any of these items? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Michael makes a motion to...
Well, yeah, I'll make a motion to accept these.
Okay. Michael makes a motion to approve.
Approve, yeah.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sarah makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? None? Motion passes. I'm going to go out of order for the next two. We have two guests, guests with us that are going to present, and we want to bump them ahead of us, if the council doesn't mind. So we're going to bump down to number five. Discuss, consider, and act upon improvements to the youth baseball field. Howe Youth Baseball Commissioner Jared Coffey will make a quick presentation for us.
Thank you, guys. We have a resident, this company MyCon that's listed here. I've given you kind of an illustration of what we're looking at doing. He is the Executive Vice President. He's a resident of Howe. He wants to make field improvements carte blanche. So we've kind of already started. We've replaced every stitch of chain link on every baseball field, and gates, and backstops. So he's already shown face. But we want to land a Conex trailer, a 20-foot Conex trailer with the Bulldogs graphic and their company logo, parallel to our North Field fence. It's on city property. They will maintain the graphic indefinitely. The purpose of the Conex trailer is to store a donated mower to drag fields. And so if you know anything about baseball, we conduct everything volunteer-based. We're a 501. We generate all of our own revenue, and this is massive for us. So dads will not have to trailer four-wheelers, things like that. So that's the layer one to that. Number two would be concession stands, buildings, outbuildings, sheds. They want to replace all of the siding and trim and paint as well. Third, they want to replace all of our bleacher boards. So we've worked diligently to get all of the wood bleachers out. I have three left. The rest are all aluminum, but they want to paint those and replace those boards as well. So I've given an illustration as where that falls on that fence line. It's visible from the highway. It's visible from our bleachers with the Bulldog logo facing the bleachers, and the doors of the trailer facing the gate, where we can pull in and out to drag those fields. That's about it. And I think it's a multi-layer. He wants to stay engaged annually to see that we can do this upkeep. For him, it's a drop in the bucket, because they're a multi-multi-hundred-million-dollar construction company. So questions, if you have them, concerns, comments.
Council, anybody have any questions or discussion?
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass.
Ricky makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Billy makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed, any abstaining? Motion approved. Motion passes. We're going to go on down to item number 15. Discuss, consider, and act upon opening a City of Howe investment account through Hilltop Securities, entering the Logic Government Investment Pool with a deposit of $2 million.
Mayor, council, I'll start this off. As part of our Noble Ridge Development Agreement, Rock Hill Capital Investments agreed to pay a sum of $4 million to the City of Howe in two increments. The first is upon identifying property for a wastewater treatment facility. We have collected the first half of that lump sum. We do have that in the local bank, in a public funds account. We now, since we have collected that full first $2 million, we need to maximize interest on that. And Mr. Sheckman, he and I have been in communication for about a year and a half. Hilltop Securities once held, and still actually hold funds for the City of Howe in, in a different account, in a Techstar account. I think we have a balance of about $1,500 or something like that. At one time, the City of Howe obtained a grant and parked those funds, those grant funds into that account. Those have been used, and it's just been drawing interest over the years. When talking with Mr. Sheckman about maybe utilizing that account, again, it's a government investment pool, he offered a better situation for us through Logic governmental investment pool. It has a little bit of a higher yield and more flexibility. And he's here to give a presentation on what that Logic Government Investment Pool is all about.
Good evening, y'all. Thank you so much for having me. Great to see you again. This is Mayor. I work with Hilltop Securities. We are a full-service municipal investment bank. We've been in business for about 75 years, helping issue debt for communities across, not just Texas, but across the whole country. I specifically work in the asset management department, and more specifically with government investment pools. For those of y'all that have never worked with pools before, aren't sure how they operate, best way to explain it is, it's a high-yield money market that only cities, counties, school districts, municipalities are allowed to use. Three things to consider, characteristics-wise, in order of importance. First and foremost is preservation of capital. These are public funds. Not a penny of principal can ever be lost. Not a penny of principal has ever been lost. We actually partner with JP Morgan. They are the portfolio manager. Hilltop does the operations and the marketing, and then JP Morgan, they're the 900-pound gorilla in the room. They're the ones that actually do the day-to-day portfolio management of both pools, Techstar and Logic. Second, liquidity. It is 100% liquid. You don't have to tie anything up. As long as we get your order to put money in, take money out before 4:00 Central, you'll have those funds within the hour, at bare minimum, at the end of the day. And third is the yield. Typically, the yield is going to be significantly higher than what most CDs or bank checking accounts can offer. Logic currently is paying 4.5%. As Monty mentioned, the city does have a Techstar account. That's our government pool. And then we also have a prime pool, which is Logic. The PFIA Public Funds Investment Act of Texas actually recommends and approves having more than one pool for the diversification piece. We work with hundreds of entities across Texas. My territory specifically is East Texas, and just in Grayson County alone, Dennison, Pottsboro, Sherman, Collinsville, and the list goes on and on. I do think that this could be very good for the city, not just for the yield piece, but also to diversify y'all's liquidity portfolio. And down the road, it could endorse for other things like investment management services or broker-dealer services. And if, I know someone was talking about issuing debt potentially in the future, we have the strongest part, I think, of Hilltop is our bankers. So that could open that door in the future as well. Thank you so much.
Does the council have any questions or discussions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So in this pool, I see that it references the IBID product. Would we be using that as a part of this pool?
So IBID is for states that are outside of Texas. So IBID is an institutional deposit program. Essentially, that, it's like, the way that works is, so we take increments of $250,000 FDIC-covered, and then we spread amongst a network of banks. A fancy word for that is like an omnibus account. That's, it's similar to what the pools are, but since we have pools in Texas, we don't want to monopolize that business with essentially the same product. So IBID is actually offered outside of Texas.
And what's the, is there FDIC insurance related to these pools?
So there's no FDIC insurance, but for example, if you take Techstar. Techstar only holds US Treasuries, agencies, and repurchase agreements. The way that the bank gives y'all FDIC coverage is they collateralize your cash with those same US Treasuries. So essentially, instead of backing your cash, you're now just going to own a fund of these same Treasuries.
Are you going to be providing a prospectus for our secretary, so that she can make sure our auditor knows that all our funds are pledged?
Oh, 100%, yes. There's an information statement. It talks about compliance with the PFIA, and 100%.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
That's correct. So there's no minimum balances. There's no funding requirements. You guys can keep a zero balance for as long as you want. Use it whenever you want. There's no wire fees, or transfer fees, or ACH fees. This, again, was specifically created for you guys, and essentially for all governmental entities. If you go through any state in the United States, they all have their local state pools, similar to what Techstar and Logic offer. That is correct. So whenever I quote you guys, or I send Monty an update of fees, or of rates, that it's our net of any of the fees. So 4.5%, what Logic is currently paying, is already baked in any of the expense ratio.
Can you think of anything else, Monty, that...
Oh, I have one last question. If we have two different pools, how do we know how much is in each one?
So we send reports monthly, but you can also, whenever you log in, it's, you can pull reports there. There's actually two separate logins. So Techstar, you guys have your login for that. And then if we do move forward with Logic, you guys will have a separate login for that as well. So it's extremely user-friendly.
Do you have a recommendation on, like, should it be half and half, or is one easier to move money out of than the other?
So they operate the same way. So our operations team, we like to keep it very tight-knit. We don't have a call center, so you'll know exactly who you're dealing with. They'll know y'all. I'm not necessarily supposed to provide recommendations for the money split. What I will say that I've seen the large, successful entities do, is they carry about 70% to 80% in Logic, because it is the higher-paying pool, and then they keep about only 30% in Techstar for that diversification piece.
Did you happen to talk about how long it takes to withdraw the money?
It will be within the hour. So some of our competitors, they wait for a large influx of orders, and then they batch all their wires together. We process ours as soon as we get it. So again, as long as we get an order to send money back to wherever y'all request it to, before 4:00 Central, it's going to happen within the hour.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Thanks, y'all.
Do I have a motion from the council?
A motion to approve.
Sean makes a motion to approve.
Does the motion need to verify how much the split is going to be between the two different pools?
You're probably, that would be a good, that would be good for us to do that. Do you want to make a motion to...
So now you're going to have to split it.
Yeah, we're going to have to.
What's, how much you want to want where?
So let's, maybe let's discuss that for a minute.
Yeah.
Does, does anyone on the council have a suggestion on what you think we should do?
I think Ms. Meyers got a pretty good insight into this.
I...
To recommend.
I would recommend 75% in the Logic pool and 25% in Techstar.
So 75 is Techstar, correct?
75 in Logic, because it's the higher interest, and the rest in Techstar.
Anybody?
Anyone, yeah, anyone else have a thought on that? So now, do we have anyone that wants to make a motion?
A motion approved. The 75% to Logic, the remaining 25% into 45%.
Into Techstar?
Into Techstar.
Okay. So Sean makes a motion for 75...
I'll second it.
75% Logic and 25% Techstar, and Sarah is second, has seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? None. Motion is passed.
To hedge this question before it gets asked, can you explain what this money is usable for?
That is a great question. Since it was dedicated for the sewer project, as it stands today, it is only usable for upgrades to the sewer system. Now, whether that is construction, or, well, it is for construction of the, towards that goal of the sewer plant. We are having discussions with the developer, should we go in a different direction, you know, what the alternatives could be. But as of today, it is sewer only.
Okay. So if you guys will go back up to item number two. Discuss, consider, and act upon cancellation of election for May 3rd, 2025. Ms. Hewitt?
Mayor, council, we were, we had three positions available on the City Council, two council members and the mayor position. There were only three applications, one for each position. So my recommendation is that we accept those three as undefeated candidates and move them on to the council.
Thank you, ma'am. Does the council have any wish to discuss this item, and if not, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, was that Ricky? Ricky makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Michael makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? None. Motion passes. Item number three, discuss, consider, and act upon certification of unopposed candidates. Does council wish to discuss this item? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ricky makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Sean makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion passes. Item number four, discuss, consider, and act upon 2024, 2025 budget amendment. Mr. Walker.
Mayor, council, I think I've indicated to all of you that I would, I would have budget amendments throughout the year. This would be our first one. I don't anticipate another one, but you know, it certainly could happen. One, the, in administration, the revenue of municipal court fines was adjusted from $50,000 to $100,000, which is a more accurate figure, based on the new police department numbers. Municipal court costs, fees also increased from $40,000 to $65,000 for the same reason. The expenditures for municipal court were adjusted from $6,000 to $45,000 for the same reason. Also, Chief Sullivan has requested to remove the salary of the administrative assistant plus paid benefits for the 2024/5 year, and use those funds for upgrades to technology for the department, which was much needed. And I'm certainly, I'm sure he would agree with me on that. Those funds have been allocated, a little over 2,300 for an evidence room audit, $11,000 for a new citation system, which was way out of date, $3,300 for records management system, which also was heavily out of date, $6933 for car and camera taser, $21040 for firearms and gear, $2,680 for a new evidence locker, $11,667 in card camera security system. We also added, also in, factored into this budget is a lease agreement, which will come up later in, in this agenda, $71,249.85 for three patrol units in an enterprise lease agreement. The street repair line item was increased from $150,000 to $162,319.66, which includes a match of $25,000 for the Young Street Grant. And that'll happen this summer. All of our street projects, if Josh Marr would... All of our street projects, if Josh Marr would... I think he might speed up things, I'm hearing, for us, maybe. Health insurance under EMS, fire was duplicated on the previous budget. So we took that out. Fire chief presented an opportunity to me, which helped out with our EMS paramedic pay, which gave us some more flexibility in the budget. We had budgeted a battalion in the fire department for Chief Manay at twenty-three thousand. However, the lease agreement would be ninety-eight forty-four. In solid waste, on your sheet there is a typo. It should be twenty-three thousand two ninety-six to salary and solid waste for a part-time code enforcement officer. In the water department, the line item of equipment maintenance was adjusted, and this is a big one, fifteen thousand to a hundred and seventy-three thousand eight oh two seventy-five for the water conversion expense. And that's moving the GTU water from east to west with the ability to do that. Plus, we had major well repair at well four. I'm not sure why all these wells are giving us problems at the same time, but apparently they felt the need to do so. In the water department, salary retirement insurance were adjusted to reflect the changes in staff. And previously, we did not budget for a vehicle lease for the public works. But we had room to order two new diesel trucks at an expense of eleven thousand nine twenty-four. So these changes created an increase in expenditures of a little over seventy thousand. However, the increase in revenue and cuts comes to seventy-five thousand. So currently, the amount of budget surplus at the end of the year in the budget cycle projects to thirty-three thousand four sixty-three sixty.
Counsel, do you wish to discuss this item?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
To approve?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
Okay, Billy makes a motion to approve. Michael makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Any abstaining? None. Motion passes. Moving on to item number six. Discuss, consider, and act upon the Howe Police Department Racial Profiling Report. Chief Sullivan?
Good evening, mayor and council. The report that's put in your packet is an annual report we're required by law to bring to our governing body. It's also a report that I'm required to submit to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, which has already been submitted by rule. It's just a way of how we track our citizens interacting as it relates to traffic stops, pedestrian stops. And so we can see our statistical data. So it's really enclosing just to kind of how we engage in our community and it breaks down the diversity of how we engage our community based on ethnicity.
Counsel, do you wish to discuss this item? Have questions for Chief Sullivan?
Did you see anything unusual in this report as compared to other cities?
No, I think the report's pretty laid out. It's pretty clear. The only thing that I would add or make to it is, you know, I had limited input with this data, only being here the latter two months of the year and according to the record management system. So I don't have a way to hundred percent say if there was something that was off kilter. But basically, what I was able to look at over the last two months of the year is pretty consistent with what our populace and our traveling public is. I have no concerns. I'll say it that way.
Thank you. Any other council members have questions or concerns? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll motion approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Sean makes a motion to approve. Billy makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's everyone. Any opposed or abstaining? None. Motion passes. Item number seven, discuss, consider, and act upon amendment to the Howe Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual Regarding Vehicle Privileges. Mr. Walker?
Mayor, council. After a recent situation with an employee, it came to my attention that the Personnel Policy Manual doesn't address company vehicles being located at places that might bring a negative impact upon the city of Howe image as a whole. So we wanted to address that. And an addendum has been created for the manual, which gives the city administrator the ability to impose restrictions or rules on the operation and use of city vehicles if such restrictions contribute to the safety or the general public... Safety of the general public or reputation of the city of Howe.
Does the council wish to discuss this item? And if not, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. We approve it.
I'll second.
Michael makes a motion and... Excuse me. Yeah, Michael makes a motion to approve. And Billy makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone, any opposed or abstaining? None. Motion passes. Item number eight, discuss, consider, and act upon the Annual CPI U 3.47% Rate Adjustment in the Agreement with Frontier Waste Solutions. Mr. Walker?
Mayor, council. In our agreement with Frontier Waste Solutions in that contract that was signed several years ago, they can request rates to be increased or decreased at the same percentage with the consumer price index. And the latest CPI increase is 3.4%. It is recommended to approve the rate increase. This will take effect May 1st. Last year, we absorbed the 5.9% CPI. Did not pass that through to the citizens. I think the next agenda item, we'll have to address that since now we're up at, you know, nine percent above where we were. But this is just to approve the 3.4%.
Does the council wish to discuss this item? And if not, do we have a motion to approve the 3.47% rate adjustment?
I'll make a motion to approve the rate adjustment.
Sarah makes the motion to approve it. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Billy makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss, consider, and act upon increases in refuse rates due to CPI percentage increase from Frontier Waste Solutions. Mr. Walker?
The good news is, this won't affect the majority of the citizens of Howe. Not in this year's CPI adjustment, anyway. With that rate increase that was just approved, this causes our rates to the customers to adjust. So I got with Becky on our rate structure on this. It was set a couple of years ago with the previous administration. And after looking at it, with this rate increase, it would put us losing money on certain items, which are mainly dumpsters. We felt the best scenario to get us back to where we were was to take a fifteen percent increase on those amounts, get us back in the positive on those. These are very minimal profit margins. It's basically only for administrative fees to send the bills out. We did not increase the residential one-cart trash. So most of all of us just have one trash container. This proposal is to not increase that, which we would have a profit of $2.11 on. I think that's pretty comparable right now to other cities and where we are. This mainly just gets us over the hump with the dumpsters for the most part. So that's what we're proposing.
Does the council wish to discuss this item? And if not, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion approve.
Sean makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ricky makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? None. So a motion passes. Item number 10, discuss, consider, and act upon moving court location to Summit Gardens in preparation for future expansion of police department at 700 West Haney Street. Mr. Walker?
This will probably be a tag-team event here. Sullivan will probably follow me up on this. As we grow, Howe Police Department is going to grow as well. And they have already indicated that they need more room at the police department. Currently, they occupy about half the building. The other space is really not being used, only for court. So what we're proposing is to move court over here. And eventually, elections would be in this building. It would not affect this upcoming election cycle. But we can envision... And he assures me, right, that the big desk, bench, I guess, will come out of that building and would be permanently moved over here. I don't think that would hinder any of our rentals that we currently have. I mean, they're basically birthday parties and showers and things like that. I don't think it'll have an effect on that at all. They can also slide back. So if Chief Sullivan wants to have any additional comments?
You know, as you've seen in the agenda tonight, I've asked for your consideration to move us forward and become an accredited process. Part of that process is having a facility that beats certain standards in functional operability. As we stand right now, it makes it kind of difficult to meet everything a hundred percent as asked. As Monty alluded to, the other thing that I'm looking at is looking down the road and preparing us for growth. I know there are other commitments the city needs to invest in in order to move our city forward. And so this is one step of that process, allowing us to be prepared for that growth.
I will say, I did also... I went over there and visited and looked over there. They are pretty cramped, just so you know. Chief Sullivan did share his plan, his vision of what it would look like. So I did check that out. You guys are welcome to ask any questions that you might have. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does the council wish to discuss this item any further? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Just like to say, mayor, that...
Yes, sir.
It's about time that we move those big chairs down here.
I second that.
I know it's... I know it's not going to affect me, but us bigger guys, we push these little chairs to the limit, trust me. I make a motion that we approve.
Michael makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was a pretty loud aye. Any opposed or abstaining? None. Motion passes. Number 11, discuss, consider, and act upon entering a lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for three 2025 HPD Ford Interceptors, two 2025 Public Works Silverado, 3500 HD work trucks, and one 2025 HD Chevy Silverado, 1500 four-by-four crew cab battalion. Mr. Walker?
Mayor, council. I will tell you, I was awfully hesitant in looking at this in the beginning just because of the sheer investment and the commitment. But I do understand that we're in a situation now where we're struggling to replace vehicles. And it's just a hard reality if that's where we are. And I don't believe that we can continue to go out and purchase the vehicles the way we've done in the past. You know, other cities have gone to this model. Me personally have never been in the leasing of vehicle. I was... I just had some apprehension. But after reviewing the numbers and understanding the maintenance agreement on these, which are included in this, I believe this is probably the best... I think this is the best route for us to go. I know that as we grow, and we're going to grow exponentially over the next five to 10 years, we better have a plan in place. And this allows for us to be able to add those police units and as well as Public Works trucks and things like that that we're going to need in the future. So I think this gets us in the right direction. And again, this was kind of spearheaded by Chief Sullivan. So if he has some additional comments, I'd welcome him to come up here and have any explanation of this as well.
Again, as we look to prepare not only our city but our department moving forward, I have to look at ways of how do we fund these opportunities without necessarily breaking the bank. Also try to look at ways of how we can bring a return on investment to our investment and how that keeps us moving forward for an operational effectiveness. And so with the lease program, what that allows us to do, kind of in this scenario, we're able to basically buy two cars for the price of... Or get three cars for the price of two. And so if you look historically, we funded somewhere between twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars buying a car. And under this scenario, it allows us to get three cars for what we would normally pay for two. How does that help us moving forward? Couple of things. The fleet management program since benchmarks based on mileage and usage, and they set up a term of how those expire. So how this is set up is at 48 months. But at the end of 48... As we get closer to 48 months, they look at it every six months and to see if our mileage is higher or lower, they will make that adjustment. So one of the ways I would use an example of that is our K-9 officer. Obviously, part of his goal is to do interdiction and catch narcotics on our highways. He's probably going to put more miles on his car. So that means Enterprise would be watching that and they may come back and say, hey, let's replace this car at 36 months instead of 48 months. Well, if you look at the pot that's in your packet, at the end of the term of that, we have to get a residual check. In this case, it would be somewhere around a hundred and eight thousand dollars. As a city, we have an opportunity to take that money and put it in our bank. Or we have the opportunity to take that money and revest and continue to expand our fleet or replace that fleet with age without having to come out with a large sum of money every time we buy a car. The other part of this is this also pays for our upfitting. So Enterprise puts $10,000 towards that upfitting initially as part of their plan. And then everything above that, we have to pay for, which is why you see the buy-in. And so obviously, for police and public safety, that's expensive because of what goes into them. And so it does cost us a little more than it does Public Works to replace our fleet. So that's kind of the Reader's Digest version, unless you have a specific question.
Chief, this would be adding to our existing fleet, correct?
Yes.
So we won't get rid of any of our current?
We will down one car. I say down it. We're going to keep it for emergencies. So right now, we're in a scenario where we've been in scenarios of having just one car. And so that has limited our ability of how we maneuver to service our city. It's also made us recognize that our current fleet, if we continue down this path, we're going to wear the two cars that we do have that's solid out rapidly. And then that's going to create another challenge for us with funding perspective. And implementing this program, this allows every officer to have a car. That helps us with recruiting and retention. It also lesses the amount of wear and tear on these vehicles versus running 24/7.
Is one of these three going to be the K-9 unit?
No, the K-9 unit is already in place.
Okay.
So I took the 2023 Charger that only had like eight thousand miles on it. It is outfitted with a candle, a heat alarm on it, a different brush guard system on the front. As we move forward, you will notice all of our fleet will go to that brush guard system. There's some police reasons for that that I don't want to disclose publicly. But it's a better way to protect our vehicles and our officers.
So chief, how does, at the very end of this lease, do they cover disassembling everything inside the vehicle as far as getting rid of it? Because I know in the past, that was always a pain. Once you...
So kind of how this works is they say, okay, at the end of the 48 months, we need to replace these vehicles or we're adding new vehicles. What I have done historically is most of that equipment gets usually at least two good cycles out of it, meaning they go through two uses of cars. More than about eight to 10 years of equipment on a car is a lot. Technology changes. It starts becoming out of warranty and we start running into issues. So that will push over into new vehicles as we replace these and limit some of our costs moving forward.
This may be a question more for Monty, but I know that we have payments to Independent Financial for existing cars. It sounds like some of those might be at the end of their lifecycle. Are we in danger of being upside down in any of the vehicles we have?
We only have one payment through Independent Financial, and that's for the F-150 we just purchased. And it's got one payment left.
Okay.
Well, I think just... I think just one. We just made one.
We just made one.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion from the council?
I motion to approve.
Billy makes a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Michael makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? None. Motion passes. Item number 12, discuss, consider, and act upon awarding a construction contract to Quality Excavation for Young Street and sewer improvements associated with the city's TEC CDBG grant, number CDV 23-0055, up to the amount of $417,500. Mr. Walker?
Mayor, Council, the city applied for a block grant several years ago, and we had one qualifying bid, and that's for the Young Street improvement. It's a sewer, sewer line improvement and to reconstruct that stretch of street, which is from Highway 5 to the service road. We have a matching contribution of $25,000 for this block grant in which we did budget in the street expenditure. The one qualified award or bid was for Quality Excavation LLC. Project total $398,409.30. And in our situation, I would request a maximum amount of expenditure because there could be overages, but I would, I would recommend a maximum amount of $417,500 for this project. Because anything over that amount would, would fall into our out-of-pocket expense. And I think that's a, that sets a hard limit for us, which I think that's the way we should go on that. The road resurface, resurfaces actually from Jones. So that little section from Jones to Highway 5 will not be resurfaced, but that's a better section of that street. The big manhole in the middle of, of that street that gives us all kinds of problems.
And takes out an oil pan every couple of weeks?
Yes. That will be completely removed during this process. It's not needed, so we're just going to take it out. That'll eliminate a lot of phone calls on the bottoms of cars that go too fast on that stretch. So my recommendation would be to approve.
Council, do you wish to discuss this item? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
At the beginning, you said reconstruct Young Street, and then towards the end, you changed it up to resurface.
Yeah, I should have said, it should be resurface. It's not a complete rebuild like what we're proposing for our streets and the down agenda items. Sorry.
So if you, if we make a motion to approve, it's just to approve it as it stated on the agenda?
Yes. And I make that motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Billy makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? None. Motion passes. Item number 13, discuss, consider, and act upon awarding a planning grant administrator to provide application and project-related services for the CDBG MIT Resilient Communities Program for a comprehensive grant, plan grant to be funded by General Land Office. Mr. Walker?
Mayor, Council, I think I've spoke with you all in the past about applying for this grant that would fund our comprehensive plan update. We have done so, and we are, we'd like to proceed with public management as the administrator through the process for the CBDG MIT Resilient Communities Program. We expect to get anywhere between $200,000 to $300,000 for this comprehensive plan. It involves a capital investment program, which we desperately need in order to do an impact fee study. So this would replace our 2010 comprehensive plan that's a little outdated. So we would like to move forward with public management as the administrator through this process.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any discussion from the council?
I have a quick question, and it's probably silly, and you may have explained it already, but what's the difference between this comprehensive plan and the firm that the Economic Development Board retained, and we did all the answering the questions and, yeah?
Yeah, the strategic plan was for the Howe EDC, and it's a scaled-down version of a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan includes the capital investment, and also the capital investment plan. It also includes a thoroughfare plan. It includes all these detailed reports, land use, maps, and land use areas. So identifies water needs, sewer needs, I mean, everything that encapsulates a city. So it's a more thorough, far more thorough plan, and it'll take a year to produce. Instead of, the strategic plan took, I think, three meetings, or two, two maybe. So this is a massive document when we get done.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I motion approve.
Sean makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Maybe to it.
Go ahead. Who's making my second?
I'll make a motion.
Sounds like Ricky.
Ricky makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion passes. Item number 14, discuss, consider, and act upon approving interlocal agreement with Grayson County for street rebuilds of North Smith Road from FM 902 to S-Curve in the amount of $59,849.20. O'Connell Street from Bean to Denny in the amount of $22,618.80. Curtis Lane in the amount of $25,555.20. East Tuck Street from Railroad Tracks to Quinlan and Lane Drive in the amount of $13,136.46 for the total of $137,319.66. Mr. Walker?
Well, it's that time of year again where we, we budget for street repair and rehab projects. You know, it's, it's not an easy process to identify the worst roads in town because there's a bunch of them, as a citizen pointed out. You know, we went 10 years without repairing a road. So we're in our second year of trying to make up for lost time. And you might recall, we did, I think, five streets last year, and one, two, three, four, five, six this year, including our matching grant. So we, we looked at some that were in the worst shape. I know the one on Tuck Street by the railroad tracks is, it's, we're going, that's not even a street anymore. So the 902, Smith Road to 902 S-Curve is something that's got to be done. We've talked about that for a long time. There's some tree cutting, limb cutting involved in that cost too, but there's so much traffic coming out of the school area that that, that has to be done. O'Connell to Bean Street is another road that, that the trash trucks have torn up. Curtis Lane and Lane Drive were initially not constructed properly when they were installed, and therefore the trash trucks have just destroyed the sides of those streets. And we've tried to send our crews out there with, with our backhoe and flatten out the big dips as, as best possible because every time it rains, it just creates a huge divot in those streets and that, and that subdivision. So it's time to rebuild those two streets with a good, good base. And so that's kind of how, that's how we've constructed this, you know, as we move forward, we're going to, you know, be doing five or six a year as we go, as budget allows. There are some options. You know, a citizen mentioned, you know, a bond for that. I'm not sure that's, there's other ways to approach this issue because it is a large issue. You know, in the past, when, when the city set up the Howe EDC, the type B corporation, they also set up where 25% goes to the EDC and 25% goes to ad valorem reduction. If the citizens are serious about this, we could consider bringing to the council an option of removing the ad valorem reduction portion of the sales tax and inserting a street maintenance portion where 25% would go to that instead of ad valorem reduction. So one way or the other, the sales tax, you know, it'd still be the same amount, except it goes into a different fund. I know other cities have done that that are around us. And what it looks like today, if we were to go in that direction, it looks like the EDC got $18,000 this past month in sales tax. So the ad valorem reduction amount, the street maintenance amount would be that much per month. That's, that's today's money. That's not 2030. As we grow, those sales tax dollars will grow exponentially as well. So that's something to discuss or think about later on if, if the council decides that that's an avenue you'd like to proceed. Certainly can look at that and do some due diligence and bring it back to you if, if that's an avenue.
Does the council wish to discuss this item?
I'm sorry, I think
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, another thing, we had, we had, we had Duke Street on the list last year for $39,000. And so we, it didn't get done because of the atmosphere gas was doing the construction, and so the county could not get to it. So we resubmitted the bid for that same section of road this, this year, and we got $64,000 as a bid for that. And I don't know that anything changed except the county commissioner. I'm just kidding, Josh.
Blasphemy, I tell you, that's blasphemy. Hello, Mayor, Council, Commissioner Josh Marr. Adding on to what Monty was talking about, not with Duke Street not being withheld. Yeah, unfortunately, there, you know, the prices to his, a little bit to his extent on Duke Street, see what the increase in pricing with our growth is doing here to, to what the county's being charged in this stuff. And on top of that, I think our bids that we're getting in, we're going up $5 a ton of rock that's come, that we're about to get. So obviously, the price we have here is not, it doesn't have that included, but I don't know what next year holds once we get all that. That being said, some of these on here, just want to give you a little timeline if y'all do pass this stuff. So Tuck Street and O'Connell that's listed on here, we'll be able to get into that once that's passed. If y'all pass it today, we'll get it through Commissioner's Court next week most likely. And we'll be able to get our local machine out, probably grind those streets up fairly quickly, just because there's not a lot of asphalt on them, unlike Curtis and Lane. Those have a lot of asphalt, same as Smith. So we'll probably get those grounded up, let them sit, they'll pack in a little bit longer. Also, with the Smith Road, we'll get in there if y'all approve this. The brush cutting will happen first so we can get that stuff cleared back, get the brush cleared back and clear for our dump trucks to come in there to lay the chip and seal. All this is for two-course chip and seal. In addition to the, to the city doing their allotment on Smith Road from 902 to the, to the first S-Curve, the county is also prepared, we'll take that, we'll take the county's portion and go from that S-Curve up to the new, where basically the asphalt transfer is from the new subdivision. So essentially, you'll have Smith Road, brand new from 902 up to the new development, and of course, the work that they did.
If you listen closely, you can hear Sharnell say amen from the phone.
So I think that's really what I want, little extra stuff added there. And of course, Lane drunk, well, yeah, like Monty said, doesn't look like Curtis and Lane were built too well, because they do have some concrete gutter there, so we'll have to be, we'll be careful going to edges. And we'll get with y'all when we get a timeframe here. We'll also obviously have to get some cars moved off the streets when we go to work, work those areas. We'll probably do a grinding first, then we'll come back later and start doing the chip seal. But if y'all have any questions for me, have at it.
I got a question, Commissioner. So on Smith Road, what's that transition going to be like between the road surface and those residence driveways? Because I've noticed the driveways where it meets the road is just horrible as well, I guess because of water runoff and, and everything else. So what, what's that transition going to be like? When you, when you're repairing this road, are we smoothing that transition to their driveways or?
We, we try to as much as possible. Obviously, we cannot, in those areas, on the county's side of it, I don't know exactly with the city, but I assume that the city would have the same deal where those are mainly prescriptive right of ways. So we can only maintain what's in the road and plus the drainage. When we get to driveways, we try to tie it in as good as we can, but by law, we cannot do work for private citizens. So we can only go, we can, it's a very gray area of what we can do to try to tie those in. Obviously, we can't go up too far to do it, but we try to tie those in when they're going to be smooth. Obviously, drainage issues, we'll wear those down. How the driveway is from that resident, they, they may need to add rock to tie that stuff in as well. But obviously, we can't tie it in five, 10 feet up the driveway. We got to stay within that 18 or 20 or 20, whatever the width of that road is, we've got to stay right there. That's just, if not, we'll get in trouble for, by state statutes.
Gotcha.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
The Tuck Street repair where it meets Quinlan, I know there's a drainage issue at that intersection. Is there anything you guys are going to do to kind of help that issue out?
Well, ours would be just rebuilding, putting the road back. I don't know of any, that's obviously a city question with the drainage.
Is that
I don't know of anything.
Last year, when we worked on Quinlan, we noticed there was a culvert that had to be replaced, and what we did is we signed a quick interlocal agreement to get that culvert replaced while they could do the roadwork. And I haven't studied that drainage area, so I'd have to take a look at it. And if, if it is something that needs to be addressed, we may have to sign an additional interlocal agreement to, to put a culvert in or to improve that culvert. Or amendment, amendment, yeah.
Addendum to the ILA, yes.
Any other questions from the council?
Oh, yes, I got one for Monty. You're going to miss me. I promise. So I'm in, I mean, I believe, you know, every road in this town needs to be worked on. What is the process? Walk me through the process on how we choose which roads we choose? Because just me personally, I've got an issue spending 40 grand on two dead-end streets with 13 residents on them when we have Duke. Now, I understand Duke is now 60-something thousand, but I, I don't know. I just, I'd like to know the process and how we chose those. If that's just, we had $40,000 left over and those two streets happened to fit, and that's why we chose them, but I mean, 13 residents, two dead-end streets. Let me get you with the two-part real quick because my question was going to tie into that one. Can you also go over what we said earlier, the difference in the reconstruct and the resurface? Because I think that plays a lot into his question as well.
Yeah, these are complete rebuilds, and all of these projects, they're not just resurfaced, these are all rebuilds. The, those two streets that you're talking about have been a major source of, from those 13 residents of a lot of complaints, a lot.
And not the other 100 or 300?
Oh, there's so many, there's so many. I mean, you can, I mean, we, we can discuss all the roads that need to be addressed. I mean, there's an endless amount. But those two, if we, if we don't fix those, the trash trucks are just, every time it rains, we have to go and repair them with our own backhoe. So if we can get those taken off our plate for a while and get those to sustain, sustainable 10-year roads. Um. 10-year roads, those were just quick, to me, those were quick wins to, to get those where we don't have divots from trash truck every time it rains because of the surface is so bad. There's, there's just no base underneath them.
Well, I've driven them. And I mean, I know, it so happens the house that's for sale has got a massive hole out front. So, I mean, I can see to that individual why this is a, let's get it done today. But I just, I was just kind of curious about the process. Do we, do we just drive around and it's a matter of somebody's opinion that says, oh, wow, that was a little hard bump, a little bit harder than what it was when I was over there on Tut, so we're going to choose this one? Or...
No, it, it's, it's studying the streets and the ones we're about to lose. The ones that need to be addressed quicker, those are the ones we're trying to address in the immediate. I mean, the biggest headache is Blath Road. We don't have one resident living on Blath Road.
I mean, I, I agree to those. That, that one in Farmington, I mean, those are roads that we don't service anybody in Howe. Yes, we own them, but we don't service anybody in Howe, so...
They need the most attention, but can't make the case to, to do those at this point, especially when we have development going on soon on Blath Road. But, but as of right now, it is a as-needed-the-most. And, and trust me, the Swanner area...
That's horrible.
It has to be on next year's list.
I mean...
That whole Western Hills area, the whole west side of Howe needs attention. And I feel for those residents over there that they're not on the list this year, but I assure you, those have to be addressed. And I don't know how we could go another budget cycle without addressing that area, even if we have to look at maximizing everything we can do to do it. But I think that has to be addressed over there. And I do sympathize and empathize with those residents over there, but we will get to it.
If I could, real quick, also kind of touch a little bit on your point, maybe ease kind of the, the long-term plans of this, what I perceive anyways. Obviously, Monty's been addressing the roads that are in much need, that need to rebuild, that cannot be saved. What this will do is get a good found base, a good strong base on it, we're able to do a double-course chip seal along to it. Being an inner, a road unlike, not considering the Young Street between five and the railroad track, obviously, but a normal residential road, those shall last you without any major repair, you know, utility repairs. Those shall last you good, probably around a seven-year timeframe. At that point, instead of coming back and rebuilding those, we're going to be able to come back, or the city will have the chance to come back and probably just do a seal coat, which is obviously a lot cheaper. We're just, it's just, we go pat, you patch it up, there's pothose, patch it, little asphalt, there's a tire rub through there, and then you kind of get it as low as you can, then you seal coat it and it gives you another five to seven-year. So, I don't want to speak on Monty's behalf or the city's behalf, but what I, what I understand here from the county's perspective is obviously, like he said, these have not been worked on for 10 years prior to last year. Now, we finally, y'all are finally getting into it. So, I think the, the process is here, yes, it's going to take a lot of money upfront. But if, if the program works properly in the, on the long run, once they get built, it's going to be cheaper to maintain them down the road because we'll just, for instance, right now, it's $2 a square foot to rebuild the road. It's 30 cents a square foot to put one-course chip seal on top of it. That's the price-saving you're looking in the future if you're able to keep them maintained properly. So, that's, and I...
Just keep that price, John.
I wish. I got feeling development ain't going to let us through.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion from the council?
Before I make my motion, it's Kirk Patrick, right?
Yes, sir.
So, I appreciate you being here and being involved and voicing your opinion. It's what it's going to take from all of us to get this place where we want it to be. I thoroughly appreciate you being here and not just voicing your opinion through your keyboard, having, actually coming here and giving up your evening to spend with us to work through this. Saying that, I have motion to approve this.
Kent Billy makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I heard Sarah, I'm sorry. Sarah makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion passes. We have already done number 15, so moving on to ordinance number 832. An ordinance specifically affirming and establishing a police force, requiring all police officers to be licensed, affirming and creating the position of chief of police, outlining the duties and responsibilities of the chief of police, establishing authority, duties and responsibilities of police officers, providing a savings clause, providing a repeal of conflicting ordinance and providing an effective date of this ordinance. We will now have a public hearing for ordinance number 832, allowing members of, members of the public to speak. Does anyone in the audience have any comments regarding this ordinance? All right, we will now end that public hearing and return to our regular session. Number 16, discuss, consider and act upon, ordinance number 832.
Mayor, is this for the, oh, is this for the accreditation process or...
Um, no, sort of.
A little bit of...
Yes, it's primarily related to the accreditation process. It's my opinion that we already had enough city code and establishment to have a police department. However, in the accreditation situation, they wanted some more specific language. So, we drafted this where we are just affirming and then putting in some additional details. So, we fully had a police department, we fully have a police department, but for the accreditation process, they just wanted some additional details. And to aid that process, we drafted up this ordinance, or this resolution.
Gotcha. Does, thank you, sir. Does council have any questions or want to discuss this item? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I have motion to approve, but I'll second.
Billy has a, makes a motion to approve and Michael makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? None, so motion passes. Resolution number 2025-0002, a resolution for the submission to the Texas Police Chiefs Association Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, application for the City of Howe Police Department. We will now have a public hearing for resolution number, resolution 2025-0002. Do we have any members from the public who wish to have, give a comment regarding this resolution? All right, now that we, since we do not, we will now end that public hearing, return to regular session. Item number 17, discuss, consider and act upon, resolution 2025-0002. Does the council wish to discuss this item? Does Chief, do you need, do we need to talk about this one?
Just a little bit.
Okay.
Have everybody get us some context of who we are.
So, assuming your package, y'all probably seen the list of different things that's required from the accreditation process. There's obviously some cost associated with that. As y'all know from some of our previous conversations, I'm very active in the Texas Police Chiefs Association. And so, over the last couple of years, we've had to amend our process and how we select agencies to come in because we would have agencies come in to apply, realize how time-consuming and stringent it is, and then they would fall out. And what that caused the association to do is put a lot of man-hours in documentation and not a lot of follow-through. So, as you look at accreditation, as I've shared with you before, there's about 2,800 law enforcement agencies in the state of Texas. There's less than 300 that are accredited. And so, we had to charge an admin fee that kind of allowed agencies to show their seriousness from it. It also allowed us to, as an association, to show our processes, our administration. And then the flipside of that is, is we worked with Texas Municipal League Grispool to get them to pay for the initial cost of being accredited once that's done. And so, that's based upon size of department. For us, obviously, we've been under 10 personnel, it's $600 a year. They'll pay the initial cost for that and then we pay that angling forward. So, this is just kind of to shore up some things from administrative perspective and show transparency to the council and to our citizens of why we're spending that money and what the goal is.
Any questions or discussion from the council? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ricky makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sean makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? None, motion passes. Resolution number 2025-0003, a resolution of Howe, Texas, authorizing professional service provider selection for the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation, CDBG-MIT, Resilient Communities Program through the Texas General Land Office. We'll now have a public hearing for resolution 2025-0003. Does anyone from the audience have comments they would like to make regarding this resolution? All right, we will now end that public hearing and return to our regular session. Number 18, discuss, consider and act upon, resolution 2025-003, Selecting Public Management Incorporated to Provide Application and Project Related Applic-, excuse me, Related Planning Administration Project Delivery Services for CDBG-MIT, Resilient Communities Program. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, earlier, we went through the process of having public management walk us through this process to apply for the comprehensive plan. We put it out for bids. We received two that came back. One was substantially a better product than the end result and what the other one was, more detailed. And since there's no match on this grant, it allows us to kind of look at the more thorough review of what we're going to get for the, the bid came in at $200,000. Excuse me. The mayor and I and Chief Sullivan reviewed with a score sheet on each one of these, and it was unanimous that we chose public management to produce our comprehensive plan. So, they are here to answer any questions of their $200,000 that they're going to provide.
Mayor and Council, first of all, I want to start off and say thank you for awarding public management. We are very happy to start this relationship and hopefully continue it on down the line. I'm going to give y'all kind of a quick overview of what this grant is going to look like from beginning to end, if y'all are open for that discussion. What's going to start out is myself and my manager Dalton Akin. We will come out here and discuss with y'all, y'all's scope of work is kind of what we describe it as, what y'all think is the most important for the City of Howe from sitting here at this council meeting tonight. I know streets is definitely going to be one of those large items, along with drainage and a few other things. Once we have that idea of what is important to y'all, what is important to the citizens, we will go ahead and build the application for the City of Howe, which, as Monty discussed previously, that can range from $200,000 to $300,000. As long as we can justify it, we are more than willing to ask the GLO for as much as we think Howe would need. We haven't gotten much pushback on that. If we've asked for $300,000, the GLO has kind of given it to us with some of our other clients that we're working with, so it is possible. It is also open to what we call special studies as well. So, as you discussed previously, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, that is a little bit different from this comprehensive plan. So, we will be covering a wide thing of options, not options, just a wide variety of cases. And I'm going to go through them. I might go fast, so if y'all have any questions, just let me know. But it's going to be a community profile, hazard mitigation, streets, water, drainage, sewer. We're going to go into streets. And then we also go into community facilities, and I know I'm missing one somewhere. But those are the main ones, I might be missing one or two. We also do a community engagement section, so we try to do a community survey to make sure that everybody is aware of what is going on and gets their input. This is three town halls throughout this lifespan of this grant in which we reach out to the community, have them come in and tell us what they think. When we're talking how long this is going to take us, once we, we got awarded tonight, so that's amazing, once we get that scope meeting done with that I discussed, we will go ahead and start writing that application. There's a few council items that we have to go through with that and a few signature sheets. So, that typically takes around three months to get completed. Once we get those done, Dalton will go ahead and submit the application for y'all. I will warn you, the GLO has been kind of slow in approving these applications, so it might take anywhere from eight months to a year, but we might also go a lot quicker than that. Depends on who's reviewing y'all's application. Once that is approved and we have that in our, that final contract in our hand, we start working the day we have that contract. And that includes field work, where we come out in the field, we stay here for a couple days and see what y'all's town is about, look at y'all's streets firsthand, do a firsthand drainage study where we look at every single culvert in the city, tell you if it needs repaired, what type of condition it is in. We do a housing study to look at code enforcement issues that might need to be addressed, as well as a land use study to look at what y'all's current land use assumptions are. And then, in the end, what has to be done to be awarded this money is you have to approve the comprehensive plan and you have to approve a zoning update. So, those are the two things. So, this process will also involve us helping walk y'all through how to adopt zoning and the process that goes along with that. So, I'm open to any questions. I might have missed something, so whatever y'all may have.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I have motion to approve.
Billy makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? None, motion passes. Moving on to our discussion items, 19 departmental reports. Up first is Howe Police Department, Chief Sullivan.
So, the first 120 days of coming and gone has been very fast and furious, I will say the least. We have implemented some new technology already. Our citation system, which does our citations, our warnings, our criminal trespass, our vehicle impoundments, has been implemented as of the first part of February. We've rode 192 citations on 129 different offenses. Part of that system also allows us to have a customer survey, which some, some people find funny. We get some very interesting comments from that. But it's part of my commitment to customer service to our citizens. And so, excuse me, where we stand right now, we're at a 4.0 out of a 5.0. So, I think my team is understanding the message that we want to deliver and that we can issue citations in a fair and friendly manner. So, I'm very pleased that we're all with that. Our new records management system has come online. Actually, the company's been here all this week, training our team to get that ready. We're still finishing up with Tlets, with DEXAS DPS and also with Tech dot so that we could use everything, use one system for everything for functionality. We answered 130 calls for service. We are looking at how we do our, our case management. I've had the opportunity to sit down with our district attorney's office, share some concerns that we've had in some previous cases. We've had some cases that I've asked to be dismissed for the interest of justice. And we've also tied it up in how we build our cases and submit them to assure that we hold defenders accountable with the best that we can in that process. As of April the 7th, we will be fully staffed. We have hired another officer, but we'll start on April the 7th. As we are today, as of Monday, we will be back to 24-hour service. Officer Wallingford and Officer Sutherland will be released from field training, but still be under probationary status. Since October the 21st, as of our February council meeting, the Howe Police Department has conducted 282 hours of training. That's not training that is recruit-based or what they get in the academy, that's additional hours of training that I require for them to be part of the Howe Police Department. And part of what that looks like, officers go through about 80 hours of onboarding. That's everything from security, computer security, special investigators training, sexual harassment, injury prevention, all those fun things to help our city try to mitigate the risk and cost. So, we're continuing to work on how we build community programs and community relations. As y'all probably have seen and heard, we are taking applications for our first Citizens' Police Academy. So, for those of you that aren't, if you're interested, I do have applications. You can also pull that from the city's website. I'll be visiting with the majority of our businesses over the I'll be visiting with the majority of our businesses over the next week, helping their input and do some additional advertising to try to drum up those numbers. I think as of today, I think we're up to 10 or 12 applicants. So quite pleased with that being the first one. The second part of our program that I'm working on is getting with all our apartment managers from our apartment complexes with our community to talk about some different crime prevention strategies as we're starting to see an uptick of some issues, and so that we can address those before they become a greater problem. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Any questions from the council? Alright, Chief Manay for Howe Fire Department.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Howe Fire Rescue has answered 68 calls for service in the month of January, the majority of those being EMS calls. Our structure fire calls have been an increase over the past two months. So unfortunately, our calls get called and people lose or have damage to their structures. Howe Fire Rescue has a total of 48 hours of training performed in the month of January. We've been called out on mutual, on multiple mutual aid calls, helping Tom Bean, Van Austin, and Sherman, and we've also been to Gunner here lately, assisting with them. It's been a busy month. Unfortunately, we've had a few issues in the fire station. We had a water leak that made us have to do a little remodel in there, ripping floors and walls and stuff out that were damaged due to water. It's all being handled as we speak. We actually completed sheet rock and paint today. So hopefully, we'll be getting floors next week and we'll be able to move back in. So, Mr. Walker and I, over the past month, had attended an ESD meeting in Whitesboro. It's more of an informational meeting about the possibilities of ESTs coming into our county, which was a serious possibility of something we will be looking at into the future. Any questions?
So the water issue, the pipe, is that due to like weather or?
It was due to freezing pipe. It was a frozen pipe. Yes, sir.
What's an ESD?
An ESD is an emergency service district. A lot of the stuff, Mr. Commissioner Marr was there with us in this meeting, is these districts are divided up among, I want to say divisions, but sometimes commissioner lines, city lines, county lines, things like that for emergency services, for fire and EMS. So our unincorporated areas is where we're working on moving forward to, in our Grayson County unincorporated areas outside of our city limits.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we looking pretty good at that process of expanding our, like we had hoped?
So far, yes.
The EMS portion of it?
Yes, so far, those discussions are being discussed for our future as we speak.
Does the commissioner here have a say in that?
He, he might.
I just, I know when we first started, Chief Manay was letting us know that, you know, Howe has had some rough history with EMS-wise, so we had to pretty much make a name for ourselves, do, you know, do good service in order to expand past our limits and, you know, get some of that EMS, you know, in our district.
That is my understanding as well. Obviously, the EMS, that contract process is basically between the county judge and the OEM, the emergency management operator. They have those contract negotiations with the fire departments towns throughout the county. And so the county judge would be more inept or at whatever the word is. Better fit to discuss the EMS process because he handles that. Just real quick, a little bit about the ESD aspect to kind of expand on that, if you wish. This is something that is widely done, accepted in kind of the bigger counties. There's a ton of them in Harris County. They started a long time ago. There were the onset of a rural fire protection district, and then about '83, state legislature killed that and allowed ESTs, emergency service districts, to come along. That is something, generally, those are formed in the unincorporated areas of the county. It can include cities if they opt to go that route. For the most part, a lot of cities do not, but with, if we, this is getting the start earliest it is with having some cities within the county that are voluntary basis, there could be that option if the CSD goes through. Of course, this is something that is more, obviously, we could talk about it, but us talking about it's not going to get it going. It's the citizens of the county that will have to either accept or don't accept this ideal. They will vote on it. What it basically does is, right now, the county provides a supplemental funding to each city that provides fire and EMS services in the unincorporated area of the county. And currently, we spend about $3 million to every, all 14 departments within the county. By statute of the state, the county is not obligated to provide any monetary donations for fire and EMS services in unincorporated areas. Obviously, the county provides that because we don't want our citizens to be left out and not provided for. But with the development we have, with the growth constraints, and obviously not wanting to blow everybody's taxes out of the water, we try to keep that as minimal as possible. That's where the ESD steps into. By state statute, it would, the citizens would vote on it. There would be a boundary line would be created, and that's to be determined. Once it's in that boundary line, whoever is into the ESD, they would have a vote. The state statutes cap it. It is, they require it to be initiated by an avalorum tax, which is a property tax. The state statute caps it at 10 cents on the $100 valuation. Again, that is something that would have to go to ballot measure. The citizens of whoever, of where they are at in the ESD would have to, they would vote yea or nay at an election if they wanted to create that ESD or not. The funding from that, that would set up its own fire district to where that funding, instead of it going through the county and the county spreading it out to whatever you'd like to do with the county's property tax currently, this money would go directly to the ESD, which then ideally, you would, the process would still work the same at the beginning where it's a pass-through to the cities to help cover. Ideally, what the, as the cities are growing, and like Sherman did, and Van Austin, they've got so much growth to the inside, they've got to, they don't, they can't really go out as much anymore. What this will do is create a funding mechanism to start having a fire department and stuff in the unincorporated areas that can serve these higher density developments, like the cottonwood that's going to come in towards Dorchester, or like Treasure Island that's probably going to come down here in Van Austin. They're in the unincorporated areas, and, you know, you had a 100-acre pasture with one house and 200 cows. Now you've got 100 acres with 200 homes and one cow. Obviously, the fire departments can't handle that anymore, so that's where this option has been discussed, looked at. So, just wanted to give you all, obviously, it's something new language here in the county. And just wanted to, sorry to steal your thunder, chief, but, and I didn't plan on discussing this today. Thank you for allowing the time to elaborate, but it's something being discussed. It's still a year or two out, most likely, with elections, but at least the citizens can kind of get an idea of it. And obviously, this needs to be a citizen-growing issue if that's something the citizens want to do or not.
Thank you. Council have any other discussions for Chief Manay? Thank you, sir. Public Works? Mr. Walker?
Mayor, Council. And by the way, Commissioner Marr is going to have a town hall March the 25th? 25th up here, and I think it's 6:30? Yeah, yeah. So I'm sure that topic will come up if anybody wants to attend. As far as Public Works, on their side, they carried out 125 service orders in January. Four meters were set, three meter leaks repaired, pothole patching. Had to order more, which I believe has already arrived. Seven water main leaks were repaired, 20 disconnections for move-outs, 124 hours on well check, samples, reporting, and maintenance. They did have an inspection, by the way, this past week. I haven't got the results back. GTUA seems to have removed the air from their line that was feeding their system. They've been flushing out these lines constantly, trying to remove that. As GTUA continually seems to have that air issue, but I'm hoping we're past that now. This has caused a lot of frustration over the past month. THI is in the process of cleaning and making repairs to well site four to increase production. I have my own concerns about well four and not the well itself, but the overall aquifer, as it's not producing what it once was. And the more straws you put in the ground, we all know that situation. So I'm hoping it is a well four issue that we can clean it up, get it scaled up, and get it to pumping what it used to and what it once was, but it's just running a little bit lower than it has. So we'll continue to monitor that. I mentioned they had their three-year state inspection, and they're working on getting stop signs installed at these intersections on Highway 5. I think we're the only city along Highway 5, Anna Melissa Van Austin, that doesn't have stop signs, like right out here at O'Connell. So we have gotten with TechDOT and got those specs that we need to have. And I know the guys have ordered all of that, and we'll be putting up the stop signs in the near future.
Any questions or comments from the council for Public Works? City Secretary, Ms. Hewitt?
Mayor, Council, the municipal court brought in $8,286.83 in fines the past month. For utility billing, we billed $214,141.1. There were 651 e-bills sent, 797 paper bills sent, which was a total of 1,323 bills that were sent. We did have 18 connections, new connections for the month, eight disconnects for the month, and four active hydrant meters. We also disconnected one hydrant meter. For our department, the new and blue ticket rider system is now live on the PD side. Our court has not done a conversion quite yet on FundView. That's going to be a manual conversion, so it's going to take a little bit longer than we had expected. The FundView transition for our accounts payable and our accounts receivable is live already. We've actually did our first process today of accounts payable. The court will be, we also have the utility billing. We thought that conversion was going to be for mid-March, but it's actually live as well. The only thing that we're waiting on at this point is to have our online payment dashboard for citizens, so that they can go onto our website and then they can pay their utility bill there. So we still have a little bit of work to do on the utility side, where we're anticipating to iron out all the kinks that we may, we have at this point, done within the next two weeks. We also did mail out a letter to our residents indicating that there was going to be changes to our utility billing. Our department has shielded those calls and answered any questions that the citizens have had, and we haven't had much feedback from them, so it's been good. In regards to our audit, reconciliation was completed for the fiscal year of 2022. All documentation was sent to our auditing team, so now we're waiting for a response for our auditors. And then we'll start the next one, which is the 2023 fiscal audit. I'm really excited to say that this, that last month in January was the first month in over a year that the municipal court actually issued warrants for outstanding failure to appear citations. An update to this is we actually had a conversation with the judge, and the judge is on board with now issuing citations for any citizen who has not responded to their citation on the original citation. So we were just doing failure to appears, but now we're going to be doing both. So that's going to be an additional income revenue for us. We have had meetings with two brokers discussing our benefits and ways that we can maximize the benefits for our employees. I'm happy to say that we did, we have one broker that was outstanding in his presentation and really provided us with four options for our employees that are better suited for our employees, and it gives them the opportunity for them to pick and choose what benefit plan medical is best for them. So we're moving in the right direction. I also attended the Lone Star Chapter of City Secretaries last month. It was a great meeting, and it also allowed me to meet different secretaries from the different cities, big and small. And that helped me to see ideas of how we can implement some of the things that they've done into our city and make it our own. There has been a steady increase in permits every month. We are now feeling the pains of the growth, but we are doing our best to manage that continued growth.
Any questions?
On the new utility billing system, is the old online portal still available until the new ones?
No, that's the online dashboard that I mentioned that's through our website. That is not active yet. There are, we're waiting on FundView on the technical side to create that link and to link it to our actual system. So any payments that are made are going to be, instead of being fed through the bank and then to our system, or our utility clerk having to manually post them, what it'll do now is when a citizen makes a payment on the online system, it'll go directly into their account and post their account. So we're skipping a step, but it's not live quite yet. What I have discussed with the city administrator is, once it does become live, then we'll go ahead and make an announcement on the city website to all the citizens, letting them know that it is now live.
If there's someone who has a late fee related to not being able to come and pay in person, is the city prepared to refund? I don't know. Do we have those?
I did have a discussion with the city administrator. The citizens have been aware for a long time of the different ways and methods that they can pay. We don't feel at this time, just because we have had a difference or a change in our billing software, that that would warrant us to waive any late fees, because the bills are still due the same. It's mentioned that when they sign their agreement and their contract, and it's also on the bill itself. So they are fully aware of when the bill is due.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I was going to ask a similar question. I just made a reminder on my phone. I'll see you Monday, because I pay mine online. I'll see you Monday. We're going from work.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
City Administrator, Mr. Walker? By the way, you can have it automatic withdrawn from your checking account.
That's the one bill I don't. I need to get it set up.
I was just reminded that Grayson County Spring Cleanup is March the 22nd. For Precinct 1. And that, what time? Is that all day?
It starts at like 7:00 in the morning, goes to about 12:00, 12:30.
7:00 AM to 12:30 thereabouts.
Something I've been taught that you live with your precinct one, any city of Howe, any residents of the city of Howe, or if you live out in the unincorporated areas, as long as you went to the precinct one, any walkways that you can't get rid of, the normal trash pickup of, I think, four tires, refrigerator, stuff like that. Bring up the living refrigerator, please. Bring up the precinct barn, open at 14:00, 15:00.
Do they need a free-on permit with refrigerators and stuff like that?
I don't know. I saw it. I've got to check. Probably find it in my Facebook real quick. It is our precinct one Facebook page as well.
Thank you, sir. Monty?
Mayor, Council, to piggyback off of Ms. Hewitt's comments about the uptick in permits, I just want to prepare you that we are going to have to budget for a permit clerk in this next go-around, next budget cycle. Because of not only the amount of permits, but also the amount of citations that Chief Sullivan and his crew are turning in, it's overwhelming, Amy, to do both. There was a time when the permit clerk could be also the court clerk, and those days are numbered. I just want you to understand. Last month, I attended the Q&amp;A session at TML in Austin for, with the attorneys. So I got to meet our attorneys down there. It was very informative. There's a lot of questions, a lot of cities down there that had some valuable information. The attorneys, it was a good session. It was an all-day deal. So a lot was learned there. Tomorrow, I'll be leaving to go to College Station for the TML Public Finance Certification, which we have to have every two years. So I'll be doing that. I'll be out for the rest of the week, but I'll have my phone on me if you need me. Developments that we're working on, Noble Ridge, Phase 1A, still working. As it's, those homes are being constructed. those homes are being constructed. 1B is right behind it. You can see the dirt work going. Ponderosa Point, we'll talk to, talk to y'all a little bit about that. They're requesting a possible PD adjustment. The NRP group is beginning construction. You can see that. Those are the apartments down on the north side, past the high school at our city limits. That's what that is. We have Grace Meadows, which is 51 half-acre lots. It'll be coming before you at the 18th meeting in just a couple of weeks for plating. That's getting ready to kick off. The Howe Meadows, we've received mud formation documents on that. That's 762 homes near Summit Hill across the, across Smith Road. Talbot Estates is 65 half-acre lots. We're working with them on annexation, which requires us to take water through our future Central Park, our 46 acres. Saddleback Homes, their first home is, uh, will be soon under construction. They pulled permits for the first one. It's about 3,200 square feet. It's a pretty, I think it was that. It might've been 26, but I, I'm not sure. It was a big home. So they'll start that here pretty soon. Still negotiating with Centurion American. That's 669 homes. And let me read through this real quick. Code enforcement, this goes, this kind of ties into Saddleback. We had to run a new sewer line back there behind, on, in between Bandera and Castle Gate. And two property owners had their fences, or one of them still has a fence on our alley. So as they're running that sewer line, that's going to have to be addressed. We're going to have to access their property. And one did not respond to any letters, and we had to write them a citation and go to court over it, so we're still working on that one. The other one has agreed to move their fence and already has done so. I think we've hammered out streets. I have visited with Commissioner Marr and the City of Van Austin leadership about their thoughts on renaming West Farmington Road, which runs west of US 75 into Farmington Road. This is eventually a 911 catastrophe waiting to happen when you have West Farmington running into Farmington. So this, this early on, discuss the conversations have been to extend the name, blith all the way across 75 where it would end at Farmington Road. So those are early discussions. Nothing has been determined there, but just wanted to point that out. Personnel, Chief Sullivan mentioned that he hired Sam Wallingford, the newest officer. There's another one coming on board, starting April the 7th. He's a tenured officer, lots of experience. Wastewater, last update I gave you, we were requesting documents from BVRT2. We have received all documents at this point. Franchise agreement came in first, but we, we have now received all documents and we're kind of looking through those and, and possibly turning some of those around fairly quickly. We mentioned the GTUA water issue on the Public Works. One thing will be, not to make anything more confusing for the citizens, but we'll be updating our website in a few weeks. It'll have a fresh, new look, more user-friendly. We're contracting with Munibit, which they, they've constructed Van Austines and a lot of other cities in Texas. So our, our website will have a really nice look here in, hopefully just a few weeks. I've also registered with Go.gov for a .gov account, which will change our address, our, our web address from CityofHow.org. I was hoping to CityofHow.gov, but I got an email this morning saying that is not acceptable. It has to be CityofHowTX.gov. So we'll, our, I've already spoken with our IT department. It'll still be a ghost of CityofHow.org until everybody gets trained over. There shouldn't be any disruption. Our webs, our email addresses will also change, but again, they'll still be forwarded on. There shouldn't be any disruption there. Sales tax, City of Howe hit a new record for any month in the city's history in January with a total of 79,872.90. Of that amount, 19,968.23 went to the Howe EDC, which by the way, that officially, the HCFDC, Howe Community Facilities Development Corporation, will now be known as the Howe EDC. The paperwork has been filed for the assumed name with the state of Texas, so the tongue twister is gone. At the end of January, the, the Howe EDC checking account balance was 322,816.99. There are some projects that have been identified, but they also looking at an investment pool since the EDC shares the same EIN number with the city. They qualify to, to join that government investment pool as well. So we're going to look at that. That'll probably be on their next agenda. Comprehensive plan, we've discussed. Okay. The Howe EDC, the city and the Chamber of Commerce will work together on a Howe, on Howe, a Howe Business Summit. It'll be the first one we've ever had. This will be April the 29th at Howe High School. If you've been to Dennison Development Alliance's Economic Development Summit, it'll be very similar to that. We'll have guest speakers. It's not a Q and A, it's not a town hall. It's mainly for showing the progress that we've made to the retail developers, real estate agents, and the business community. Possibly some Chamber of Members will be invited. It'll be RSBP only. We have confirmed speakers at this event. It'll be the county judge, the county commissioner, the mayor, police chief, fire chief, EDC Board President, a chamber board member, and then we'll have an intermission and we'll bring in our developers to give PowerPoint presentations on what their developments look like. So we're talking about Cope Equities, Centurion, Qualico Homes, Old Prosper Partners. We'll also hear from Howe ISD Superintendent Kevin Wilson on the bond issue, Connections Park Chairman, and possibly BVRT, depending on where our current situation is with them. So that, that's going to be a big night for Howe, that we can kind of showcase and show off what we've been doing over the past several years to get to this point. Utility billing, in January, the total amount was 206,119.47, and February 214,141.01. Court numbers are back to, they're, they're to a point where I personally haven't seen, but it, the arrow's pointed up on the court. So any questions for me? Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Well, we have to move on. I'm sorry. So now we'll move into executive session. The city council will convene in closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Open Meeting Act, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, Executive Session as authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. Consultation with attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter, Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.072. Deliberation regarding real property, Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. Economic development. The council will now go into executive session, and the time is 7:57 PM.[1173.16]
Thinking about coming to that. It's a good breakfast. I love you, man.
Are we, are we live? The council will now reconvene into open session. The time is 9:23 PM. Number 20, discuss, consider and act upon any items listed under closed or executive session if needed. There's no action taken. If there's no further business to come before this council, this meeting stands adjourned at 9:24 PM. Have a good day.